Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting from Monday, May 23rd, 2022, to order. Would you, I'm used to saying we're going to, we left executive session, but no executive session tonight. So please rise and join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment and announcement?
It's supposed to be Dan first, Dan.
That was going to say, Dan, you got to sit back down, sorry. The lady in the back with the yellow shirt on?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Those of you that don't know me, my name is Terry Canovin. I'm a registered nurse, an elder, in here in Harwich, former chairperson of the Disability Rights Committee for the town, and I'm an ADA access monitor for the Commonwealth. I'm also the one that during my tenure is chairperson of the Disability Rights Committee. I'm actually the one that was responsible for bringing the grant writer in for the Housing Rehabilitation Program administered by the Department of Community and Housing in Boston. So, why am I here tonight? Well, as maybe you know or don't know, the ride is the number one and gold standard for ADA disabled people transportation publicly in the Commonwealth. And even though it's not here on the Cape Town Islands, it is governed under the MBTA and the Department of Transportation. And the day after the judge in Florida released the mandate for mass federally, Governor Baker issued an executive order mandating that everyone that uses the ride at any time must be fully masked, including today. Now, Harwich is not in compliance. I certainly have had several discussions with Emily, who's been lovely to talk to. I know her for a long time, as well as the CCRTA. They have, they actually didn't know the mandate came out from an executive order. They now require masks for their drivers and riders on their ADA paratransit transportation. And let me qualify further, I am a member of the ride. My eligibility is good through April 30th, 2025. Also, an ADA paratransit approved passenger here with the CCRTA. And unfortunately, I also have to use the Harwich COA vehicles that are leased by... What a guy. Sorry, it's been a long day for me. Larry saw me this morning. So they, you know, if you keep this up, you're going to get a job here. So, the CCRTA loans every Council on Aging on the Cape vehicles to offset some of their passenger requirements because of their personnel issues, et cetera. So towns lease these vehicles that are ADA accessible. They have lifts, so on, for people like myself currently that don't do a lot of stairs. And they lease them for a dollar. Now, the requirements, as I understand them, call for the towns to actually hire the drivers to drive them, so their town employees. And they, the towns provide the gas in all the vehicles. And the CCRTA brings the vehicles back to them for periodic maintenance, as well as the yearly stickers. And I believe the wonderful DPW people links here, they service the vans if they have some difficulties with lifts or whatever. So, the issue for me is, this has been an ongoing problem even when masks were mandated. There were many passengers that didn't wear them, as well as drivers. Now, on paper, absolutely, the regulations are followed. In practice, they weren't. I had several conversations with Emily. She was not aware. She did her utmost, and I'm not pointing fingers here at Emily whatsoever. And I want everybody to understand that. I'm a very big fan of Emily, and she did a wonderful job. The people she entrusted to do their jobs failed her, and therefore failed me, the town, and all the elderly people that ride the van. Some of these folks are, obviously, cognitively impaired, and they need more assistance than usual. Now, I'd suggested on several occasions that perhaps somebody should look into, maybe the driver needs an assistant.
Can I just interrupt real quickly? Ma'am?
Yes.
Just interrupt real quickly. This is public comment and announcement. It's not an agenda item. So normally, they're fairly quick. If there's an ask of this board, I would ask you to ask what that, what your request is. We're not going to be able to debate this tonight regardless, because it's under public comment and announcement. So we're going to give it to the town administrator to look into?
Oh, I already sent him a copy of the letter that I sent to the Board of Health.
Okay.
And I also sent it to the Board of Selectmen. I hope all of you had a chance to read it.
I have not gotten it yet.
Well, that's very unfortunate.
Yeah.
Because it's over a week and, almost a week and a half ago, that it was delivered to the town administration's office. One for, I believe you were the town administrator, am I right? One went to you, and one was addressed to the Board of Selectmen. Larry this morning told me he saw it.
I did, yes.
Yes?
I did get it.
Okay.
So, it went somewhere. So, here's two things, really quick. Number one, I believe that this governing board needs to mandate the compliance of Governor Baker's executive order for all vehicles of the Council on Aging, that all drivers and passengers must be masked while on the vehicle. What happens off the vehicle, we, you know, is not anybody's personal preference. And number two, I believe that this board needs to absolutely institute that an assistant has to be on the, on the traveling van, just like the Friends of the Council on Aging has their own van. They have a driver plus an aide on every transport that they have. I think the drivers need that as well. It's impossible for a driver to do the mechanics of driving and handle what's happening on the bus. Or, as well as if they're operating the lift, they can't be in the front of the bus helping somebody up the stairs. They can't be in two places at once. It's impossible. So additional assistance needs to be given. But number one, compliance with the governor's executive order. It's over a month old. I shouldn't even have to come here to discuss this. And by the way, I'm delighted to see two women on the board. And I hope the next election, there'll be two more, okay? Just a personal comment, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Somebody from administration will get back to you.
Thank you. What a guy. Thank you.
Amy?
You're going to be last, Dan.
That's all right. I didn't point out last, for somebody else did. Good evening.
Amy Sowsky, Conservation Administrator. I just wanted to let the board and the citizens know that we put barricades up at Red River Beach. The DPW put barricades up two-thirds of the way down the parking lot at Red River Beach, like we do every year. The piping pulvers should be hatching sometime this week. By law, we have to keep vehicles away from them. And if they hatch this week, the anticipated fledge date, AKA the date the barricades can go away, is right before Fourth of July, which is pretty much on schedule with other years. So, if people, we put up signage as well. Most people are very familiar with our practice of doing this, but not everybody is. So we did put up signage today. And hopefully, in four to five weeks, I will be coming to you and letting you know that the barricades are down.
Thank you, Amy. Cindy?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Well, it's official. The season's here. The Harwich Chamber is now open seven days a week until Columbus Day. Monday through Friday, nine to four, Saturday, ten to four, and Sunday, ten to two. So for any of those complaints or challenges the administration office may have had, we are now officially open seven days. We do have the beach sticker, the treasure chest, and after tonight, hopefully, the access. Just as a reminder for anyone that does come, I know it is on the town website. But there is a $3.00 contingency for coming to the chamber because of being open seven days, including all the holidays through Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Dan?
Thank you, Dan Pelletier, Water Waste Water Superintendent. I just am here before the board to let the board and residents know that the Harwich Water Department was the recipient of the 2022 Public Water Systems Award issued by Mass DEP. So I attended an award ceremony during Drinking Water Week up in Devens, where myself and a handful of other water system operators were awarded for great and outstanding performance and achievement in 2021.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Great job. This is again, right?
For the eighth year in a row.
Thank you.
Yes. And I'd just like to note that that doesn't come without, you know, the dedicated support of our staff, residents, Board of Water Waste Water Commissioners. So my head and hand goes out to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
I do, Michael.
Go ahead.
We learned last week, I think, that, at least I got messages, I think we all did, that Angelica Chalaca won an award from the Barnstable County. I'm just going to read part of this. It's a very prestigious award. It says, "Twenty-first annual award recognizes community leadership and ideals of patriotism in Barnstable County." I think we all know Angela, but she's got this for her, her teaching, her dedication to endeavors, including giving families warm-wash clothes, school supplies provided to students in need. She's volunteered for the American Red Cross, the Harwich Council on Aging. She serves on Harwich Council on Aging and Community Center. Outer Cape Health Services, we, she joined the Board of Directors a few months ago. You know, I didn't grow up in Harwich, but I toured her through Outer Cape Health. And what a celebrity. People were coming out of the, everywhere, saying, "Look who's here." We need, and there was a crowd following us around, and they weren't following me around, I can tell you that. She's just a tremendous asset to the, to the community. She's still very active, you know? And we appreciate the Barnstable, and I see we have our rep here, but recognizing her and her great efforts in the town and the school. She's maybe one of the most respected and well-known women in town.
Absolutely.
And just one final, Terry brought it up. My second, very quickly, is that Council on Aging and the Outer Cape Health Services held a suicide training this morning. And it was short. There weren't a lot of people. But they're going to continually, through a series of events, the idea is to, you know, give everyone the, very short, it's not painful. Encourage anyone, when they come up again, to attend this. Encourage, you know, how to talk to people that you think might be needing help. And do it in a way that is, helps everyone out. And we know, just reading the paper, what a big issue it's become. You know, it's always a problem, but the last year, as we all know, it's progressed to painful levels.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else?
Yeah, well, is it, is it on any topic, or are we just doing one topic?
Climb up to the microphone.
Climb up to the microphone?
Yeah. Sorry about that, but people at home can't see you in your chair and won't get your question.
No, it's okay. Yeah, no, I live right down where they're going to put the new street in, Turtle.
Yep.
Okay.
If this is related to that, that the, there will be an agenda topic, and you'll talk then.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I wanted.
Yep, thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Mary?
Town of Harwich, Notice of Public Hearing, May 23rd, 2022. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 83, Section 10, and Chapter 295 of the Code of the Town of Harwich, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the Town of Harwich Stormwater Authority, will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, no later than 6:30 PM in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Eastward Companies Business Trust, Eastward MBT LLC trustee seeks a local stormwater permit application filed pursuant to the Town of Harwich Comprehensive Stormwater and Illicit Discharge Regulations for a proposed open space residential subdivision plan with five building lots, and approximately 30-foot-long subdivision road serving the lots, and two open space lots. The property is located at Zero Orleans Road, Route 39, Assessor's Map 63C30. All the butters and other interested persons are invited to attend. For further information, please call the Administration Office at 508-430-7513, signed by the Board of Selectmen and published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, May 12th, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening.
Good evening. David Clark, Clark Engineering, on behalf of Eastward Companies. And I believe Susan Ledoux is on the line as a representative from Eastward Companies.
Can you just try and speak up a little bit for us, for the people in the back of the room?
It does.
Thank you.
So, we're here before you under your local stormwater regulation, seeking a permit. This is the second one I've done in town. The last one was administered by Griff Rider. So this is a little new to me, being before the full board. So, just to run down the stormwater system that's been designed for this subdivision. There are three design areas within the road where stormwater is captured by catch basins and then sent to infiltration basins, catch, leach pits, basically, along the side of the road. The syst, under the Planning Board rules and regulations, we're required to infiltrate up to a 25-year storm event. Under the Massachusetts Stormwater Policy, we're required to control all runoff up to the 100-year storm. So this system's been designed to capture and infiltrate the 100-year storm event so that there's no discharge to the Town of Harwich's MS4 or to the wetland that's on this property. I have received the comments from the town's consultant. Nothing in that report is a red flag to me. It's all clerical stuff that we can certainly make the revisions to the plans and the documents and have that ready next time we meet. We are meeting with the Planning Board tomorrow night to review the subdivision under their rules and regulations. And we received a comment letter from John Eidman before, before he left. And there's nothing outstanding in that that I, that I saw either. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the gentleman in the back. Do you have any questions?
Chairman, if I could, I might help with the discussion.
Go ahead.
We do have representatives from VHB. They represented the town in this matter, where we don't presently have a town engineer. You may want to hear their input and then open for questions.
Okay. Who's online from VHB? Kelly, your microphone is having an issue.
Is that better?
Much better.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. It was coming out of my laptop. I'm Kelly Siri from VHB, the Water Resource Specialist who reviewed the plan sets and the stormwater report. The biggest thing that we found from our review is that we need to see the calculations. The stormwater report was missing the pre-development drainage calculations, so we couldn't compare the post-development counts to see the changes. There, we were missing pre- and post-condition watershed plans that are required by Section 7 of the stormwater report. Appendix 1 of the stormwater report also missing hydroCAD results. It had a summary of what the results were, but typically, the hydroCAD results are included. All the, in the plan set, or sorry, one more thing, or two more things in the, in the report, there were no calculations that showed sizing of the drainage pipes, and that's required by Section 7 of the stormwater regulations as well. There was no Mass DEP checklist for the stormwater report. That's required to be stamped by a professional engineer, again, from Section 7 of the stormwater regulations. In the plan set, the plan and profile of the road did not include the stationing or inverts of the proposed catch basins. And the catch basins were not labeled to correlate those to those shown on the profile. One question we had from the stormwater report was, the, the report states that excess runoff from the 100-year storm event shall be contained within man-made detention areas along the shoulder, shoulders of Turtle Run and within the cul-de-sac. These areas are not shown on the plan set, so we request that they be shown. And to clarify, Sheet 9 of the plan set just shows that the 100-year storm is contained within the roadway. So we're asking for clarification on that. And then, just using the term for the BMP consistence, consistently, it's referred to as leaching basins in some places, infiltration basins in others, leaching pits. And keeping that consistent is important. And making sure that the operation and maintenance plan is specific to the BMPs that are included in the site. And that, that about summarizes our comments from the stormwater review. The biggest thing being, you know, to include all the drainage calculations so that they can be reviewed. So we request that we, once those are able to be provided, that we do a second review of the plans.
Thank you. Comments on what's missing?
Most everything is clerical. We did, we, there was an appendix with all the calculations in it. The wrong one was submitted.
Okay, so that'll be forthcoming.
Yeah.
Joe, do we have from VHB that list that was just read off?
Yeah, if you look after my memorandum, first thing you'll see is the engineering review. It's indicated by the number, page one, if you look. Page two and three are the lists that was just reviewed by Kelly.
Okay, got it. Gentlemen in the back wish to speak? Okay. We are going to be continuing this public hearing, so we will, instead of closing it now or continue it now, I'm going to open it up to anyone else in the public or online that wishes to speak. Hearing no one. I'll start with Larry with your questions or comments.
Well, just what you said, we continue this because we get this clarified, and then we can, we can continue the discussion. I have nothing to add or comment on.
Julie's got a notepad.
No, I, I, obviously, we need more information. We need to go back for the VHB comments. But I also have questions when you go to the planning board, because I, some of my questions relate to the open space being dedicated as open space for the subdivision, but it borders a wetland. Parcory borders a wetland. So is any of that even buildable?
No, that's why it's open space.
Yeah, so, I mean, so technically, you could build a...
Well, it is buildable. We just prefer not to go to conservation to try to get houses. So this was, the open space subdivision is in lieu of a grid subdivision. So if we had done a grid subdivision with five standard one-acre lots, we would probably have to go to conservation for at least three of the lots and put a house up to the 60-foot line from the wetland.
Okay.
So this is an opportunity to preserve all that space and more than the 100-foot buffer around that wetland.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I don't have any other questions. We just need more info.
Mary?
I was pretty concerned when I read the engineering letter with all the things that are missing. And I guess, I don't see that as all clerical. That looks a little like slipshod work to me. So I'm very concerned that this come back and meet all of the things that are required thoroughly. And we'll look to that engineer to tell us we're good.
Yeah, a lot of the things are personal preference in how our plan is laid out. So it really has nothing to do with the design. Some engineers have a background in doing public work where the minutia of every project has to be spelled out because it's got to go out to bit. Eastward Companies has been working with the same contractor for 15 years now and built several roads. They know what they're doing. So every little thing does not have to be spelled out for them. They know what to do. But I understand, I've dealt with this before, where we have engineers that, that look at things in a different eye. So I have no problem adding the, the additional information they think they need to move forward on this. And again, it was a clerical error on the, on the calculations.
Okay, but that's just my concern.
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe?
So I think now the question would be to Mr. Clark and Ms. Siri. Mr. Clark for the applicant, Ms. Siri for the town, as to when they think the material would be going around, how much time VHB needs to analyze that, and when it can come back before the board so that you can continue tonight to a date certain. Just a reminder, your next meeting is not until Monday, June 6th. Not knowing whether or not that's even achievable, I defer to Mr. Clark and Ms. Siri on their responses.
Okay.
At this point, I have 98% of the material added to the documents and the plans. I just want to get through Planning Board tomorrow night in case there's any surprises from them that would cause an additional revision. So I could have the documents to, to the town by probably next Wednesday.
And then the question would be to Kelly as to how much time they need to review.
Kelly, you caught that?
Yep, how much time we need to review, correct? If we receive them by, if we receive the updated plans by June 1st, I think we can complete the review by June 6th meeting.
To allow for a margin error is the 13th work for everybody?
Works for me. Susan, you on?
Yep, I'm, I'm here. Yes, hi, Susan Ledoux from Eastward Companies.
Hi. Is the 13th satisfactory?
Yep, that's fine.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can do that. It works for everyone else. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Mary, I need a motion to continue this public hearing until June 13th, no earlier than 6:30 PM?
I move that we vote to continue the stormwater permit application submitted by Eastward Companies Business Trust, Eastward LB... Eastward LBT LLC, trustee for subdivision located at Zero Orleans Road, Route 39, Assessors Map 63 slash C3 slash Zero to June 13th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan and Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda.
I move that we vote to approve the following Board of Selectment, to approve the consent agenda, which includes approving the following Board of Selectment meeting minutes, July 27th, 2020, August 3rd, 2020, August 10th, 2020, August 17th, 2020, and August 18th, 2020. Additionally, to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. And last, to accept a gift of $2,000 from the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod for the Brooks Part Summer Concert Series.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. New business discussion, possible vote on the Barnstable Assembly of Delegates not funding the IT budget. This is really meant to be a discussion, but is open enough for the board to have a conversation. Our delegate from Barnstable County is here tonight, so I think I will call on Elizabeth first.
All righty.
Clearly, Elizabeth, as we've discussed today, this has, there's been many conversations on this, and the point in putting this on there was to, again, express the dissatisfaction of the board that this has been taken out. And today, you had answers for me, so I will start with you today rather than the board first.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Elizabeth Harder, Harwich Delegate, Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates. I'm glad to speak with you this evening about the Assembly of Delegates amended county budget. Let me start by stressing the fact that the Assembly of Delegates fully supports the mission of the county's Information Technology Department to expand its outreach and support the towns of Cape Cod. Several Harwich officials contacted me after the assembly vote on the fiscal year 23 county operating budget. I was informed the county could no longer honor an agreement to provide technical support because the assembly voted to reduce the salary and benefit lines in the IT department's proposed budget. I was not aware of this information before our vote. If the county administration had informed the assembly of this fact, I would, of course, have not, not have voted for the reductions. Remember, though, I only have 5.87% of the total assembly vote. There was a reconciliation committee meeting between members of the assembly and the county's Board of Regional Commissioners. I wrote to these commissioners, these committee members, and formally requested that they vote to recommend the salary and benefit lines be restored to the amounts in the commissioner's proposed budget. However, the only proposal the administration wanted to discuss did not restore the cuts to IT at all. So, this morning, the board voted, the Board of Commissioners voted to disapprove of the assembly's amended budget. The assembly will now vote on this Wednesday night. To approve the budget again, we'll need a 2/3 margin to override the commissioners. I will have the choice of voting for the override, including the reduction to IT, or accepting the board's proposed budget with an unsustainable increase of 11.07% from the fiscal year 22 county budget. It is one budget or the other, all or nothing. At this point, there can be no amendments, no additions, or subtractions. So, I will vote for the override because this budget as presented is unsustainable and because unlike a town like Harwich that can decide on 11% increase, the county cannot raise taxes if we run out of money. Now, I have spoken, and I've tried to be clear on this. I have spoken with the assembly's leadership and received a commitment to address this issue after the budget is passed. Each assembly delegate has the ability to introduce an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation to the county government. Each introduced ordinance gets a public hearing. Tonight, I'm making the commitment to you that I will do this. I am a member of the Assembly Standing Committee on Telecommunications and Energy, which oversees any likely IT ordinance, and I have a full and equal vote on that committee. I can submit an ordinance to increase the staff at any time. Delegates now are simply being cautious at this point to make sure that we will be able to continue offering support should we hit a financial downturn. Our key goal is sustainability. One of my main jobs as the Harwich delegate is to be the bridge between the town and the county. I want to make sure your needs are met and that you have a voice at the county level, while ensuring that the county is doing as much as it can for the towns. And communication between us, I think, is very important. I spoke with Mr. Powers regarding this issue. I understand his concerns. However, after I spoke to him and before giving me the courtesy of a call, he attended the May 18th Board of Commissioners meeting to address the situation and question the assembly's actions. I believe this appearance did not help while we're trying to work to solve this problem. I'm hopeful that in the future, we can communicate better to avoid any problems like this. I take my responsibilities seriously, and I am, as always, honored to be the delegate for Harwich. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Larry, questions, comments?
Yeah, I appreciate the last one. I'm not defending Joe, but he, I'm sure he was acting in our behalf because we're, we're not very happy with the turn of events. And so, you know, maybe communication can be better, but that's where we're going. You know, I, I'm disappointed because the county's been always offering to, as part of their mission to help the towns, and this was a critical need for us. And it's one of these items in how much do we trust the county going forward in a plan? So, I think it, it's just a bad precedent. I know you're, you're arguing for this. I understand the, you know, expenses are going up. Let me ask a question, and I'm not sure you can answer this, but we had, we had staff support last year.
Right.
Now, and now they're arguing that to maintain that staff support, they need increased staff was what, I'm, I'm struggling to understand that, why they couldn't use the staff before.
Neither do we. And this is where the problem lies. Once before, the IT department went to the assembly and said that they needed more positions in order to do more outreach and support the towns. And everybody supports this on the assembly. In county government, we want this. So, they gave them the positions. They said these positions would result in many more services and much more revenue. It didn't happen. So, what the assembly did was give the IT department thousands of dollars so that they could create a business plan, a professional business plan to go over, you know, costs and overhead versus staff abilities and all that. They still haven't done that. So, that's why the assembly doesn't want to just, you know, say, sure, go ahead, do it again, without knowing what their plan is. We don't understand why, all of a sudden, they can't fulfill their obligations without getting new people. That was a complete surprise to us. So, that's why I'm saying, as I said last week, there's no need to panic. We're just waiting to get the information. Once we get it, I'll be able to put in a supplemental ordinance. But we don't have the information we need.
Well, as my colleagues know, I do like a plan. And so, I'll go back to that. But just for the, I, remind me, what percent is the county going up this year?
11, 11%. And I know Joe keeps saying that, so did Harwich. But if Harwich runs out of money, if your revenue projections were incorrect, and that 11% budget is not sustainable, you can raise taxes. We have no ability to raise extra money. Our money is based on what comes in to the registry of deeds and the money we get from the towns, which only gets to be raised if we decide to every year, 2.5%. So, we don't have the ability to raise more money if we run out.
That's interesting. So, we could, I didn't realize we had that, we have that ability. When we get a bill from the county, we could say, no?
You could, I guess, and we could, you know, keep Harwich out of it, but I don't think that would be a good idea. I'm just saying that, you know, the most we can raise is a certain amount. We can't just raise taxes if we need more money. And, and our whole key with this budget has been sustainability. That is our goal. When I started on the assembly, the first things we were working on was trying to solve the crisis at the county because there were too many staff, and we couldn't afford it because there'd been a downturn. And we had, surprisingly, against all of our rational thought, we had a surprisingly great financial situation during COVID. But our, our inventory is low. We are not going to be making the same amount of money we did in the past two years. And so, we just have to make sure. As you know, every time you hire a staff person, their salary is the least of the costs. There's OPEB and Medicare and this, and those costs last forever. So, we're just trying to make sure that we can sustain this.
Thank you for that. I, I agree with that. I think maybe my argument is there are priorities in the county and what they're spending the money on. Because obviously, you're getting money, but, thank you for this.
Yes, and it, and as I, I hope I've made clear, this is a large priority for us. We just want to make sure it's done correctly. And as it stands now, the budget has nothing to do with whether Harwich's contract is going to be renewed. You know, we feel strongly about this, but I've explained, you know, we just need to make sure we can do.
Thank you.
Julie?
I, I know you can't answer this definitively, but in, in proposing the supplemental ordinance, do you have any idea in terms of success?
Oh, I'm fair, I'm, as you say, never, we all know, never say, oh, yeah, it's going to happen. But I do know this is also happening to Bourne, and it is also very concerning to us that the county would threaten to renege on an agreement because that, as Larry said, that sets a really bad precedent. So, I would think that I would have luck, that we. I mean, it's not just me, but that those of us working towards this end would be successful.
And when they provided the budget, the reduced budget, I mean, is there no specifics on what they're cutting? I mean, I was shocked to hear they, they cut.
What happened was, now I'm speaking off the cuff, and I have to be, remember to be nice.
We know it's a challenge.
Yeah, you know me. I like to speak my mind and tell the truth, and sometimes that gets me into trouble. We got the budget late. The Finance Committee and the Assembly repeatedly asked for information that was either not given or given late. And by the time we had to, by law, by charter, vote on the budget, we had been given nothing. That, nothing that is now coming out, let's put it that way. So, we, I mean, we had made it clear from the beginning of the year that we were concerned about all these new staff positions. Some people about this staff position, some about that staff position. And when the, when the commissioners were not willing to reduce the budget at all, we requested, or I didn't request, the Speaker of the Assembly requested that anyone who wished to make, send in what they'd like to see cut. And that resulted in a long list of all the positions we wanted to see cut and a couple of items that went from $20,000 a year, $20,000 a year, $100,000 a year. So, that's what was presented to the assembly. We went through them one by one, and people who had something to say spoke up at that time. Like I said, I did not know that they were going to renege on the Harwich contract with the IT cuts, or else I would have screamed bloody murder. But, and that was the process. And we voted, the assembly voted for the cuts unanimously. And the commissioners asked for a reconciliation committee. So, we did, we did that. And the, the assembly was all ready to go over every cut. And instead, the administration said, no, here's a list of what we're willing to do. And they didn't want to discuss, we'd already, the, not we, the, the assembly members at the meeting said, made a motion, all right, let's start with the first cut. And the Chair of the Commissioners said, no, no, we're only discussing this one proposal, which was then handed out to the members of the assembly that were at the meeting. And that, that didn't even include the IT cuts. That didn't include restoring the IT. And I'd written to them and asked them to do that. And so, it was, it was felt that it was not the best effort at the time. And so, it was decided that we will stick with this budget, which reduces it. And then, we will, because we have to, by law, have it done in a week. So, we're, we're going to put in our budget, and then, we'll be able to have the time that we were not given to really go over it. And, you know, make supplementals if we need to and cut other things that they're, that they've realized they don't need the money for, that they're willing to say, no, we don't need this, and we can put that towards something else. I mean, everything's on the table, but because of the time constraints, it's just, it is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things I think I need to correct for the record. But first, I, I'd like to take my own point of personal privilege and say that I am perplexed and dismayed at the comments that the delegate made relative to my comments, my actions, and my conversations last week. As Selectman Ballantyne said, and I appreciate that, anything that I did last week was in public, at public meetings, and on behalf of the town of Harwich. And doing so to advocate, not for a contract that's being reneged, but for a contract that has not been executed yet. And that's the problem. As you know, at town meeting, we were approved for $165,000 to partner with Barnstable County IT. Part of that is in support of the ARPA money that we're using to migrate to Microsoft Office 365. So, there is no reneging of contracts because there's no contract in place. And county officials made it clear to me that if the budget went the way that it did, the project could not go forward. The perplexion that I have is that the delegate made some comment about my comments. And I just wanted to be clear. The reconciliation committee met a week ago tonight at 4:30. I participated in that virtually from 4:30 to 5:30 and had to leave to join the board meeting that was regularly scheduled. During that time, there was no opportunity for the public to weigh in. Otherwise, I would have availed myself of that right and that opportunity. I was disappointed to hear that the second session, which was scheduled for the next day, May 17th, of the reconciliation. day, May 17th, of the reconciliation committee was canceled. I was further dismayed when I heard from a county official who said that the portion of the meeting that I missed Monday evening is that members of the delegate, of the Assembly of Delegates that participated on the reconciliation committee allegedly made comments that the problem with IT is a Harwich problem. Wednesday morning, I was reached out by Beth Albertstaff, County Administrator. The county commission was meeting, and they asked if I could input, give input as to the town of Harwich project and the budget. And in doing so, public comments that I stand by and I think can substantially repeat this evening is that I said my concern is that what's really going on is not a Harwich problem. It's a problem between the county commissioners and the Assembly of Delegates. And sadly, caught in the middle is the town of Harwich, the town of Bourne, and just about every other town in the Cape. So I made it clear to the commissioners that after your discussion last Monday evening, the town of Harwich was eminently disappointed in the way that things were going and hoped for an opportunity to convey for the importance of the project and what we're looking to try to do. The end of last week, outgoing finance director Bob Lawton emailed me and said that he had established a supplemental budget ordinance, that it was my understanding that the commission was going to consider that would restore it. It's great to hear that Assembly, Assembly of Delegates harder is going to do that as well, but, um, I'm just incredibly disappointed in the comments made this evening. Because the comments that I've had have been in public, have been open, and have been in support of what this board has directed me to do. And had it not been from a random chance meeting on a Tuesday night, the delegate and I would not have spoken. So there is a communication problem for sure. I think there's a bigger issue in the governance that's going on at the county level, and last but not least, we're stuck in between. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I will just say that about the comments made at the commissioners' meeting, intended or not, they were taken as an insult by many members of the Assembly of Delegates, and it hurt the reputation of the town of Harwich. Um, it was, he said the, um, it, you can watch the tapes. You can watch the tapes of the reconciliation committee, um, and as he said, he wasn't there for the end. You can watch the tape.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask for the personal privilege of sitting here tonight, doing my job for this board? The assembly delegate is mentioning that the assembly is disappointed in me. I can show the board a number of emails and phone calls that I received from other county officials who are not disappointed. To me, that is not the issue. The issue this evening is what's going to happen with the budget, which must be in place by June 1st. So supplementals, whatever they may be, are coming at a later date. We are being held up in our procurement process because we have our funding in place for July 1st. So I would argue that it's not about my work or Elizabeth's work or anybody else's. The issue tonight is what's going to happen with their budget because we have to sit and wait on a major investment for town technology. But I don't appreciate having to sit here with a back and forth. I'm not an elected official. She is, and you folks are. I serve at the pleasure of the board, and I do the board's work.
Right. And that's not your fault. I know they put it up, put you up to it, but yes, by appearing there, you put yourself at the request of the board, apparently, in the middle of a fight that didn't need to be had.
So I'm gonna interrupt now.
So it's just...
So I'm gonna interrupt now.
We're working on it. I'm confident you're gonna get it. You don't need it till July, which is why I said, "Don't panic." And...
Elizabeth, thank you for coming tonight. We're gonna stop the back and forth. Joe was a representative of the board.
Okay.
And the other board members have spoken and I have not. I have watched some of the tape. And for the delegates that took offense to Mr. Powers's comments, I would ask them to check themselves. Because the process and that reconciliation meeting is nothing more than a joke when none of it is happening in public because there was no real debate. The debate, as you said to me today, the bulk of it, happens via email or via phone call to one person who puts it together, but those motions walking into that meeting were prepared before the meeting, and there was very little debate on the thing. So I'm gonna end that with the town of Harwich needs its representation by the delegates. Nothing has transpired outside of these meetings and the town administrator working on our behalf to the delegates. We are caught in a fight. And you and I discussed that today, so we may as well make it public that there is a rift between the commissioners and the delegates. It's got nothing to do with Harwich, but we're being penalized for it. Period. There's no gray area to that whatsoever. The, the, the budget that you guys received was late, as you said. The commissioners have a whole nother side of it, but we are caught in the middle of it, and we are just simply asking you to deal with it. And it's not much different than the fight that's going on with the ARPA funds. And it's not much different than Julian Seer having to come into a meeting with both and try and reconcile that. We are asking our county government to support this town. We can go into how much money the county is sitting on right now, but we won't go into that. And the 11.7% budget, I get you can't raise taxes, but you guys are sitting on a boatload of money right now and have not had budget increases over the last, how many years?
Every budget increase.
So I appreciate you trying to get a handle on it, but the town of Harwich is not rich. The town of Harwich doesn't want to raise our taxes. We want to use the county services, and that's all we're asking for.
And I want to give them to you, and I am working on it.
Thank you.
And I've been trying to say that.
I know you are.
And that's, and the assembly is as well.
My comments are directed at those who said it's a Harwich problem. That's who, and if they're insulted by that, then so be it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion and possible vote to exit a license agreement for merchandise shack at White House Field. Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This matter is not yet ready to come before the board, but to give a quick update, as you may know, the Mariners' season, which starts next month, uh, they're looking to upgrade their merchandise shack, as they did with the bathrooms. Uh, so the Mariners are working with the town and town staff to get that done. So what we expect that to culminate in is your meeting on June 6th. Uh, you should have a document to execute between the two parties, somewhat to what you did back in 2016 regarding the bathrooms. I guess the overall story here is we're very excited for the Mariners' season to begin and for them to be able to sell their swag from a better merchandise shack.
Thank you, Joe. Questions or comments from the board? Joe?
No. None.
Okay, I see. Discussion and possible vote to approve the new quarter one bill insert provided by the treasurer collector. Amy?
Good evening, Amy Bullock, Treasurer Collector. Um, yep, so I'm here today, like I said in my memo, to ask for approval of an insert for the first quarter billing. Anytime there's a change to the tax bills, I like to include something just to notify people. Be printed on bright yellow paper, so it'll be hard to miss, and I'm sure some people will, but that, that is why I'm here tonight. And if you had any questions about the change for the lockbox, I am here to answer that as well.
Thank you, Amy. Mary?
No, I thought the, the insert was very clear, and the lockbox looked like it made a lot of sense. A better relationship with the vendor is always a good thing.
Julie?
No, I don't have any questions, and the reviews on the lighthouse thing that you provided are excellent, so. I'm familiar with Lita Bank as well, so...
Larry?
I'm fine. Thank you, Amy.
Okay.
I'd need an LED to notice it in my envelope, but thank you for the green paper.
Okay.
We're all set. Motion to approve, Mary?
I move that we approve the new quarter one bill inserts provided by the treasurer collector.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Discussion on approval of the fiscal year 2023 disposal area fee recommendations link.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, Wink Hooper, DPW Director, excuse me. I'm here this evening to make my annual recommendation on disposal area fees. Um, you've got a bunch of spreadsheets behind my memo. One of the main spreadsheets in there captures all the disposal area expenses. Those include all direct expenses, so employee salaries, fuel, tip fees to where we haul materials to, and all indirect costs such as fringe benefits, salaries allocated from other DPW employees that don't work at disposal area, such as myself and vehicle maintenance and equipment amortization. I break those costs up into everything that a sticker, strike that, that a permit buys you, since we abolished the sticker a few years ago, um, that a residential permit purchases you, and then things I call commercial or anything that there is a user fee associated with. In my memo, I wrote that this July will make seven years since we increased residential permit fees. I need to be clear, and I should have put another line in that, um, that Mr. Powers brought to my attention this morning during the discussion, that I have only sought an increase from the board for FY '21 and FY '22. Prior to that, I thought that it was not needed. We had a contract in place. What drove it in '21 and '22 was that our MSW contract went from $60 a ton to $90 a Um, and then COVID hit, and the board did not take my recommendation to increase. This evening, I am recommending that the residential sticker go from $160 to $190. I looked up the previous recommendations, um, and I recommended $185 last year and $180 the year before. Some other recommendation increases I have are the non-resident is to maintain the same delta there is between the residential and the non-resident sticker. I'm recommending an increase in MSW from 120, gotta put some glasses on here, from 120 to 130. And I'm recommending that commercial C and D go from 165 to 175. Those last two items are more or less based on market conditions, meaning what, what do they get, what other places are charging for those items. As you all know, expenses have gone through the roof every which way, and this is no, no different. This is really, uh, business is still booming at the disposal area, um, and we're trying to manage it the best we can, um, but I believe some price increases warrant your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Wink. Mary?
Um, I, I respect your math. It's very thorough. I, I just am reluctant to go at a 19% increase to the residents. And I, I get that it's been seven years, but that seems like a huge jump. Is there any way we can soften that and maybe up some of the others? You said the, um, the C and D, you were going up to 175. Could, can you do that, 180, 185, and maybe make residential 175? I just hate to do that much of a jump.
Um, as far as the C and D, uh, well, let me start by, we serve at your pleasure. This is the board's call and what the board wants to do. The C and D is rather inelastic, and by that I mean, previous price increases have not affected the tonnage one iota, and that is because there's very limited outlets. The closest outlet is S&amp;J Esco in Dennis, and they are charging 185. So it would be in line with what, um, S&amp;J is charging to do so. We, we've experienced, they went up $5 on us, $5 the year be, the year before. We did raise that rate, I believe, last year under the same discussion that you may have brought up, um, or, or maybe Chairman McCaskill brought up.
My brother here.
I think it was me.
So certainly, what, whatever the board would like to do, we, we can make done, and we can certainly cover that. In round numbers, every $10 on a residential sticker is about $100,000, uh, quote.
The, the other, um, area, the, um, the, the individual items, like computer monitors, I know they're small dollar values, but some of ours, I think eight of them, looked like were low compared to other towns. I don't know that that gets you a lot of money, but could we bump them up?
Uh, again, this is your call. You have my recommendation. Those are very small dollar items. What my recommendation is, is simply recouping our costs for disposal. All of those small things are basically, are based upon our cost of having them picked up or where we take them to.
And last but not least, I, and I know this couldn't be done for, for right now, but should we be looking at that thing where you buy a bag? It forces the hands of people that don't recycle.
Pay as you throw, is that what you're referring to?
Pay as you throw, that's what I'm referring to. And you learn how to smush it in the bag. That's the technical term.
Um, my personal feelings on pay as you throw, it's not going to be very popular with the recyclers, but I believe at this point, whoever's gonna recycle in life is recycling, and whoever doesn't is probably not going to. I think what pay as you throw does is drive your trash, your residential trash elsewhere. Maybe you have a business, uh, maybe at your disposal where you can get rid of stuff. Maybe you go to another town. Maybe you have a commercial hauler rather than purchase your bags. What I have seen is towns that adopted pay as you throw, their residential trash does decline, but it's going somewhere. It, it, it's going somewhere, and I would not recommend going after a pay as you throw model.
How, how do you know it's not going into recycle?
We might, the recycle markets, um, happen to be very good at the moment, but six months ago, they were in the tubes. So I don't do a lot of trying to, uh, account for the, although it is accounted for in there, the, the revenue, or try to predict what the revenue might be. It's really simply a commodities market. Um, my, my feeling are, i- is that you really are, whoever's going to, well, let's put it this way, on a larger basis, DEP's plan was to recycle their way, um, out of having MSW generation. Now we are faced with, the state as a whole is faced with exporting mass quantities of MSW because the recycling has not materialized to the point that DEP wanted to see. Um, and I think a smaller component is, of that, is that, um, when you do enact the pay as you throw, yes, your trash goes down, but I, it'd be hard to convince me that you're getting everybody to all of a sudden be more socially responsible.
I don't know. I've watched a couple of Friends in towns, and they did become more socially responsible. So I, I don't know.
Come on up, ma'am.
Oh, thank you so much.
Sorry to make you get up and come to the mic, but...
I have no problem with this one.
They have to see you at the microphone, that's all.
This, this is no, no stab toward you at all.
So as the advocate, I always will be for the disabled and elderly. Would the board please consider maybe just an increase from 160 to 175? Do we have to go the whole amount right now? And maybe we could go up a little bit more next year for those of us on very fixed incomes. Thanks you for your consideration.
Thank you. That was gentle. Julie?
So...
Julie, go ahead.
First of all, I have to correct, I have to correct myself. I wasn't on the board when you guys voted these. So, so it's actually me thinking back a couple of years ago when I was on the board before because I have said in the past, "We provide a commercial service that other towns don't." To your point, they have to go further. So to me, I always go to that first. Prior to the citizens paying more than residents, I, I say up the commercial rates because overall, that's what's costing us as well. So to, to the other lady's point, Terry, um, I'm thinking, yeah, okay, because you have been recommending an increase, I know you have, and we've been struggling even when we were on the, when I was on the board before. So if we could make it smaller, to Mary's point, decrease the increase to residents, if we could do 10 bucks on the resident sticker and make up the additional 15 that got us to 190 on both the MSW and the C and D, could we split those and try, and maybe that doesn't answer the, the question of what the financial part that you're calculating?
So every $10 increase on a residential sticker generates about $50,000 in round number. A $10 increase on C and D would give us, in round numbers, about $100,000 more in revenue. We do 10,000 tons of C, actually, we just did 13,000 tons of C and D last year. Um, so yes, it's certainly able to do so, and that's kind of how we've, why I didn't make any recommendations for four years solid to increase the residential... any recommendations for four years solid to increase the residential permit, was because it was more or less being offset by the commercial businesses, is what we're saying. And we can certainly continue to do that, just know that the real cost of that residential permit is somewhere in the 190 range.
Understood, but I think it's, it is hard. I mean, it's hard to jump with everything costing more. That's just one more thing, right? 30 bucks is 30 bucks. So if it could be 10 bucks and we could make up the difference elsewhere, I think that's a, because again, we're providing a service that other towns are not providing, so they're still going to come to us. They're not going to go all the way up.
Absolutely correct.
Right behind you, Link, one more time here.
Sorry.
She forgot a thought.
I love Julie's comments, but I'd like to just say one more thing. If we go up $30 on the residential stickers, I really believe we're going to find a whole lot of bags of trash around town that we don't see right now, because there's only so much people can pay for. I'm not saying not to put them up anything, but let's just try to go like Mary was suggesting, not 19%, maybe 10%. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Larry?
I appreciate the comments from Mary and Julie. I'm reluctant to affect your numbers too much, Link, because we have to get the budget balanced, but trading off the municipal C and D for residential makes sense as long as the balance works. So I'd support that.
You know, I have to say, part of the issue, and why it's so dramatic, is because for four years flat, I said, we're kind of subsidizing the residential and didn't make an incremental recommendation to the board. So kind of some of this is on me for four years for naught, and then the last two years due to COVID, I think we said the board chose not to make an increase. So I would say in the future, maybe some smaller incremental increases would be more palatable.
But I'm hearing the others right. I think we're, we feel fine about C and D subsidizing residential.
Link, I wouldn't take that on yourself either, because I remember the last time you were before us, four years ago, you took kind of a beating on raising the rate. So I don't think that it was, that this falls on you. I think you've heard the comments from the board, and luckily for everybody tonight, we're not voting this, because we have to have a public hearing to raise rates, and the nearest public hearing we could get was the 13th, based on advertising. So we'll be back at this again on the 13th with a public hearing, and I would suggest the board get any extra information that they need from Link prior to that meeting. Link, I share their comments about raising the residential stickers. How much were you up in revenue at the dump this year versus last? How much more revenue?
That's in the data. Off the top of my head, I'm going to say, last fiscal year was 3.8 million. We're probably going to close this year out at 4, 4.1-ish. Business is booming. Everybody kind of moved to the Cape for when COVID first hit, and they're all remodeling their houses, seems like.
Just two other comments, something careful, for the board to carefully understand, is diesel prices, when the budgets were done this year, weren't what diesel prices are now. So looking at Link's budget and what it's going to cost to transport this off Cape, I believe your numbers are going to be skewed by added costs. That's one. Two, Link, you and I had this conversation, and I have agreed to do a deep dive with you. I don't see any reason why the town of Harwich and the town of Yarmouth are competing with private sector businesses on C and D. So that's something that I'm going to get into a little bit more with you, but S&amp;J Esco is about five miles from the Harwich dump, and do we really want to be in the business where we're allowing all these other towns to bring their houses, campers, boats, et cetera, to our dump, as well as all the commercial haulers for trash? And with the acquisition of some of the bigger companies on the Cape, of these trash companies, I'd say the handwriting's on the wall on what it's going to cost us to get rid of this material when we have to have new contracts. But I will be calling you this week. You can respond to anything you want now.
Go Celtics.
Thanks. So a public hearing scheduled for no earlier than 6:30 on the 13th. Yes. Anyone in the public, anyone else wish to weigh in?
Speak.
You can speak.
Well, I must have missed a vote on the other one, you know, when you were talking about the maintenance. But no, Mike, my issue was, it's not about, you know, across the street from me, they want to put in their road with the houses. I haven't got a problem with that. It's the road itself, because 39 has a crest to it, and people come over there, and if there's somebody here...
So just for the public, we've rewound now, we're back to the public hearing, and these comments are based on that turtle, turtle run, I believe?
Yeah, turtle run, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So my, just my concern is, it's not building, I haven't got a problem with that. It's the speed, and it's, I mean, if you put in six houses, there's 12 cars coming out of there, okay? So you got, and it's going to be right at the crest of the hill, I believe. So when people come over there, they're coming over, you know, it's 45, so they're doing 50/55. So the more traffic in that little space is going to be more dangerous.
Are you, are you planning on attending the planning board meeting tomorrow night?
I was told to come tonight with the letter.
So tonight, tonight, the board was hearing it. Tomorrow night, the planning board is hearing it, which, Joe, if I'm correct, the more impact will be tomorrow night, based on things like traffic and speed, that stuff that the planning board...
Okay, then I must have...
Joe, will you, will you give them an explanation on what time that meeting is?
Sure, that meeting's back here tomorrow night at 6:30, and what the chairman's talking about is, the planning board is talking about the entire subdivision that's proposed. Any of the comments that you're bringing up now would be helpful for the planning board to take into consideration as well.
Okay, tomorrow night. All right.
We're talking more about the drainage permit, but the planning board will do a comprehensive look at traffic and everything else, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, can I get a motion on E?
I move that we vote to approve a new season common viculars license Pelham-on-Earle Operating Company LLC, DBA Pelham-on-Earle, 30 Earl Road, pending Health Department approval.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve a new annual common viculars license Grumpy Pizza LLC, DBA Alexi's House of Pizza, 181 Route 137, Unit 3, pending Health Department approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve continued expanded outdoor table service application for Jake Rooney's 119 Brooks Road.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve a weekday and Sunday miniature golf license renewal, S&amp;S Amusements LLC, DBA Bud's Miniature Golf, 9 Sisson Road, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Old business discussion and possible vote to approve the memorandum of understanding with Harwich Conservation Trust for the Coldbrook Eco Restoration Project. Michael, do you want to join us at the table?
So Mr. Chairman, if I could, wastewater superintendent has been working with Mr. Locke and his organization, the Harwich Conservation Trust, but Dan's also been working with town council and has some updates, I think, on the proposed memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. Michael, do you want to speak first, or dive right into Dan and his comments?
I defer to Dan.
All right. So thanks, everyone, for joining us here tonight. Next to me, Mike Lack from HCT. Also with us, some members of the project team, Nick Nelson, who is on the screen behind us, who is coordinating the design. We also have Ed Eichner from TMDL Solutions and Brian Howes of UMass, who have been working with us on behalf of the town advocating for nitrogen removal components of this project.
Thank you. Welcome.
I believe Nick has a PowerPoint.
Tom Evans, president of Harwich Conservation Trust as well.
Oh, Tom?
Yes.
Apologies. And I might have missed Eric Ford as well, from Fish and Wildlife, who's on the screen as well. So I guess Nick has a PowerPoint presentation to go through, so I think that'd be the place to start and pick up questions after that.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm going to try to share my screen. Can you see that screen okay? Can you see that full screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Nick Nelson. I am a fluvial geomorphologist and the regional director for Interflue, and just wanted to provide a little bit of background on this project for some folks who might not know some of the details, and then an update on where we are with the designs. So just to zoom us in to the project site, we are here at the Coldbrook Preserve off of Bank Street, just east of Bank Street. You can see Main Street here through Center of Harwich. Zooming in further, this is the project work area outlined by the blue polygon here. These are retired cranberry bogs that have been, that have not been farmed for a number of years now, and you can see a lot of the historic farming ditches through there, and the impact from the farming. So the, a lot of the goals of this project are to remove some of those impacts. Project team is the town of Harwich, the Harwich Conservation Trust as the landowner, and then representing the town is CDM Smith with TMBL Solutions, and S Mast, who was introduced earlier, and Eric Ford with the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game has joined us today. And we, my company, is the design sharing firm, working with the trust and the ER. There are a number of other partners as well, but I'll leave it at these core partners for now. The town's primary goal, as Dan alluded to earlier, is to increase the nitrogen removal to Stackleton Harbor through denitrification and nitrogen removal. In addition to that goal, the Harwich Conservation Trust's other goals include ecosystem restoration recovery, as well as recreational opportunities. So there's a real wonderful opportunity here to tackle a number of different issues, including the nitrogen concerns within the harbor, but also increased recreation and increased ecosystem benefits. A couple of years ago, in 2020, a few people in the room there came before you to present a concept design for the project, and if you recall, this is what that concept looked like at the time. And so just wanted to bring this up as a refresher. So this shows Coldbrook, which is this blue line here, flowing west to east, and around the retired cranberry bogs, south, down to Hoyt Road, underneath Route 28, and out to Stackleton Harbor. The light blue polygons are the open water ponds, and the green polygons are shallow emergent marsh. Yellow polygons are, sorry, the green polygons are the deep emergent marsh, and the yellow are the shallow emergent marsh. So a few different types of marshes, and then this big blue area here, the southern extent, the downstream extent of the project, is where we expect salt marsh to evolve into in the near term. You'll notice on the right side during that concept presentation, there were some areas that were presented to shoot for, in terms of the total acreage of each of these community types. And so as, as we dove into the designs after this concept was presented, we tried to achieve those acreages that are shown on the right, recognizing that the exact configuration of these areas was going to change through the design process as we learned more about the engineering designs. And so this next slide here shows the updated designs with some colors slapped on top of it. So the engineering designs are at the 75% level right now. They are ready for permitting, and we hope to submit those permits very shortly, so that we can receive feedback during that regulatory permitting process, finalize the designs, go to construction. I drew the polygons, again, for these community types on top of those engineering designs to kind of bring that forwards a little bit and make it a bit more clear as to where these community types were. So again, the blue polygons, apologies for the fire truck in the background. The blue polygons are the open water ponds. These are shallow ponds, about six feet depth or so, and the green polygons are the deep emergent marsh. Yellow is shallow emergent marsh. And then again, this southern part of the project is that developing salt marsh. So we did hit these targets or exceed those targets. I'll show in this next slide here. You can see a side-by-side comparison of those targets, hitting those first few, exceeding the shallow emergent marsh acreage, as well as some of that, the remaining resource areas. So that's, that's the extent of what I wanted to present, try to keep it pretty simple for now, but just to show that in, in whole, the current updated design drawings, engineering design drawings, match that design intent that was presented a couple of years ago, and match those community types and acreages. And I will stop sharing there. Mike, was there anything that you wanted to add to that, or Brian and Ed?
From Harwich Conservation Trust perspective, the presentation that Nick shared is a, is a helpful overview to understand the course of the design process, and, you know, how we've arrived at where we are today. And we hope that it helps answer some of your questions raised on April 19th, and that we can move forward with your approval of the memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement, as the document is structured, so that we can continue partnering on this project.
Thank you, Michael. Dan?
If it's appropriate now, if you'd like me to just touch on some of the draft language that Mike and I worked on for the MOU, or MOA, or if you want to keep on design and technical questions.
Board's okay with moving on?
Yes.
So from my understanding, there were some concerns with the MOU as presented at the last meeting, with respect to a couple of components that I was aware of. One being, I guess the first and biggest one is item 11. It's on page four of the MOU. This I actually sent out, I believe, Friday afternoon, so I think it may be somewhat different. It was in the packet. But if I can just, if you'd like me to read through that? Yeah?
Good. Changes?
Changes. All right. So the change was to section 11, paragraph C. It was originally to include, as the project is implemented and it is managed after completion, should monitoring reports or other technical information reveal that water quality at the property associated with the open water ponds, including but not limited to elevated phosphorus levels, is adversely affecting HCT's ecological restoration goals as stated in item four, then previously, it said the town shall pretty much fund all of that remediation effort. So in working with Mike, trying to share that responsibility of ownership of the project, we're proposing adding additional language to the effect of, all right, picking up from the last line. If we're affecting HCT's ecological restoration goals as stated in item four above, then the town shall consult with HCT and their partners to collaboratively develop an analysis and proposed solution to the water quality problem through data collection, engineering study, and related work funded by up to $50,000 reserved for said purpose, set aside from the already existing 2017 town meeting project funding authorization. Said reserve fund shall be available for the purpose of a period of five years from the date of the eco restoration construction completion. If mitigation measures are needed, then HCT and the town shall work cooperatively to fund and implement a mitigation plan to address water quality issues. If the reserve $50,000 is not needed for said purpose at the end of the five-year period, then the funds will be utilized to... then the funds will be utilized to support the town's nitrogen attenuation effort through invasive plant monitoring and management that assists the growth of native plants in shallow marsh, deep marshes, salt marsh, and," you're gonna have to say that last word.
Riparian habitats.
Riparian habitats, which help naturally reduce nitrogen. Another line that was edited, going back a page to section five, or paragraph five, rather, that line stipulated that pretty much moving on from here on out, HCT would have ultimate authority on all design changes. So we added a line to the end of that that says, "Should the final design result in any substantial modifications to the 75% design plans as of May 20th, 2022, said changes will be reviewed and accepted by the Harwich Select Board." So that at least gives us an opportunity moving forward to weigh in on any substantial changes to the document. And then lastly, I did receive correspondence from council this afternoon who did review both of these changes and was okay with them. The one thing that they did add to the end was a new paragraph 18 that simply states pursuant to general law, chapter 44, section 31, "The town's total liability under this MOA shall not exceed the available appropriation or any additional obligations by the town shall be subject to a written amendment to this MOA." So that's a high-level overview of the changes that Mike and I have worked on over the past couple of weeks based on the last meeting.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you. Thank you, Ed, and for being here, Brian for being here. As you know from the last meeting, I was a skeptic before. And you helped me, uh, move me away from that, but now I've returned somewhat. My skepticism has kind of resurfaced to some extent. And what caught my eye actually was it, was the MOU that seemed to be all directed towards ecological restoration and very little stated towards nitrogen mitigation until almost towards the end, and then it's brought in there. And, and that gave me some discomfort because from the beginning, we were hoping to get a compromise between ecological restoration and nitrogen mitigation. And this seemed to be favoring one over the, over the other. And just to restate, and Brian forgive me for stating the obvious, but, you know, initially, you know, the thought process was that on the nitrogen mitigation side, we'd have larger and deeper ponds who slowed down or increased residence time to decrease the amount of nitrogen going out, and that was a good goal. And then we moved away from that to increasing the ecological and shallower ponds and multiple ponds. And that may or may not work. I, I think the direction is it should work. I'm not trying to debate this, but what I would like for my satisfaction, and if we go that way, and I think some of this has helped, although the language you added still gives ecological restoration the upper hand over nitrogen mitigation, and I, I'd like for both of them to be equally important. So I'd like that language to modify somewhat to give those equal priority. If part of this project is to monitor, see how we're doing, we have monitoring from the last several years. Well, then my question is, and I would ask, we put in here, what's our starting point? Is it the three points that we have at the Lower Cape, the over channel, which is, if you look at total nitrogen, it runs from four to five kilograms per day, for instance? I don't know how we can judge, what we promised the town, what we, what we, not promised, that's an overstatement. What we suggested to the town was that if we did this mitigation, we could reduce the nitrogen from 35 to 50%, I think. What I'm missing in this document is, from what? If we just throw that out without, and we have a lot of monitoring data. I, I would like to see a starting point so we can make some judgment on that. And as I say, I really don't need to debate it, but those are my points.
I'm not gonna debate it. I think that your points are valid. The, the reality is that the true starting point is that we'll start, we have multiple points that we'll start up, but the key one will be back to the MEP, which the loads are codified in, in the DEP and EPA, TMDL for the town. It's a legal document that we're supposed, that we're trying to meet. So we'll start there. Now, there's been growth since then. We can account for that. But we also have additional monitoring data that we will use to compare back to the MEP, and we're doing pretty good, that that's, seems to be holding. That means it's a very robust starting point. It's not gonna be like two versus six versus eight, and then what is it, you know?
No, I agree.
They're all, yeah, they're coming out about the same, so that's good because there's natural variability. But the, I, I agree with the language that you said in the MOA. But what, in the technical groups, which I'm in the technical, not in the MOA business, right? And in the technical groups, the, the, the debate lines were, we want it as deep ponds as you could get. And we settled on no shallower than six feet because that would help prevent stratification, any bad things happening in those ponds, but be deep enough to trap particles and such, and also lead to this, what we're trying to get in nitrogen removal. You can, we can argue whether the ponds are as big as they absolutely could be, but they are the same as in the conceptual plan that was presented in 2020, that, that had been hazarded out, beat out. The addition though is, is the emergent wetland, the shallow and deep emergent wetland. Those serve a lot like ponds too. So it's sort of like if you take the deep emergent marsh and the pond areas and you add those together, that's sort of more like what the real pond is, and the shallow area is up for grabs because sometimes they'll be wet and some, you know, deep with water, and sometimes it won't. But they're, so the effective area for those ponds for nitrogen removal is bigger than, than, than it first looks. I mean, it is, the pond is the pond, and the shallow, the deep area is the deep area, but, but there's more going on there. I don't really account the shallow emergent marsh very much for nitrogen removal. It will happen when they're wet.
Right.
Not when they're dry. The, the freshwater marsh restoration, I'm not expecting a lot of nitrogen removal from, other than it'll attenuate rainfall and things like that nitrogen, so that's good. The big thing in this project that held it up for a long time in the technical group was the cell eight, the nine acres or so of salt marsh. That's, that's the new one. That was what we were hoping, but it, that was the thing, the last thing that was added in, in 2020, and it's still evolving now. And we've just had, HCT has just come up with, with an agreement that, that really cuts the costs, guarantees pretty much the, the system will evolve into a salt marsh naturally, which is what we were promoting because A, it saves money, and B, it's a natural marsh then. But the other thing is, salt marshes are fantastic for removing nitrogen. Okay, that's, they're the best nitrogen removers we got. And the fact that, that in 2018 or even 2019, those weren't in the plan. And now it's in the plan because it snuck in before 2020.
Not certainly in 2016, where the original plan was, which was much different than this.
Yeah, this is.
I'm trying to reconcile that time change.
What you're seeing is the tug and pull of, of science and engineering and ecological restoration. But I'm a nitrogen guy. For me, I'm sort of happy. Salt marsh, good. Ponds, good. Deep emergent marsh, good. Mike's promised they'll take me on the tour and show me what the freshwater plants are. You know, I'm a marine guy. But, you know, it, it is a pretty good hammered out consensus plan. If I were God and king, I might do it a little different, but should it work? Yeah, it, it should work. We can't predict exactly what the attenuation is. We've set a solid baseline for that. And, and we're not gonna, certainly today isn't the baseline. It's a multi-year baseline. So it's, it's, it is an experiment in a way, but it's an experiment with the fact that we have 80 ponds or 90 ponds that we've done nitrogen attenuation on, mill ponds, and they attenuate about 50% of the nitrogen. It's also, we have salt marshes. They attenuate nitrogen like crazy. We have a whole bunch of those that we've done. So, so it's all the components we have done and studied to death for 40 years. And now the benefit comes when we take basic research and accepted applied research and put it to the use of the citizens of the, of the town of Harwich. So it's really just using the knowledge that we've fought 40 years to get. And it's tried and true. Everybody accepts those components, but now we're putting it to a new use. How'd I do?
You did very well. That brings me back to my, my first point, however.
Sure. I like that.
And that is, I would like to have the MOA somehow allow us to judge if we're succeeding in ecological restoration and/or nitrogen mitigation. Because I find if you say you're gonna do, you know, because you throw out this number, but we're not, we're, no one realizes what that number is to base it on. How are we reducing it? Now, how you, how you're gonna judge the ecological restoration to be successful? So I think if you put that in here, that we're going to pay the, if we don't meet the goal for ecological, I like the same goal, the same statement for nitrogen. But I don't know how you judge that. There's nothing in here that says what, what does that mean?
It does have monitoring, it does have monitoring in the MOA, and that will be the nitrogen attenuation piece.
Right, because we can base it on, if we say in here that's based on,
Yeah.
Because you have a lot of monitoring data now. That's really great. I don't know what you based on ecological restoration, how we know if we've met our, how you're gonna know if we meet our, if we meet our goals?
I think Eric Ford from the State Division of Ecological Restoration and Nick Nelson, both of whom are involved with multiple ecological restoration projects and retired bog systems can help answer that question in terms of monitoring post-restoration, so I would defer to either or both.
And if we can, if we can add something to that effect, because we're doing this and we're saying we're going, you make the statement, we're gonna meet this goal or else we're gonna pay for it.
If I may just, before I jump into, just in one document to, to your point, is what are we comparing it against? Brian and Ed have put together a pre-restoration evaluation of the nitrogen.
They have lots of data, nitrogen, that's fantastic. I wasn't aware of that. That's, that's great.
So we have now a basis, a pre-construction report that quantifies the nitrogen concentration today and also have a scope of work for the three-year post-restoration monitoring. And at least it's, anyone please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that we'll be quantifying that three-year post-restoration data, comparing it against the pre-construction data to try to quantify exactly how many kilograms we're removing through this system, at which point we could use that to approximate, you know, how many homes we could save on the sewer system side of things.
Which obviously you're, that's your, your central interest is how we, how we get, get credit for the nitrogen removal.
But the ecological one.
My, my concern is, we should be upfront where our baseline, we're starting from, on both sides of the aisle, if you will. The nitrogen and the restoration.
And before Eric and/or Nick speak, I did wanna mention, and perhaps this helps answer some of your question about measuring nitrogen production. On page three of the MOA, paragraph eight, it does include language, "The town will develop and implement a nitrogen monitoring plan that documents nitrogen removal associated with the project," and there's four subsections. So that, that may, that may help.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I got that part. I just wasn't spelled out where our baseline, how firm we are in our baseline, so we're, I wanna show people this is successful, that we're successful. And I, and I don't want to then get it in the sprinting contest, which is more successful, the ecological restoration or the nitrogen mitigation. If we're measuring one, we all be, we all have a starting point for the others as well. So we can say, hey, we done good. We did not, or this is our plan, but I don't, I don't want to be so open-ended that we change, you know, we know, don't know where we're going.
I would invite Eric or Nick to comment on pre-restoration data relative to the ecological restoration aspects and the post-restoration.
I mean, you have plant surveys and stuff now, I guess.
We do. That's right.
So you can, so you can base something on, so we know whether it's moving in the right direction.
Changes in plant community habitat.
Because I found this statement to be so open-ended that it could change, and you come back and say, well, we don't like, you know, for no reason. Let's kind of get it down there.
Do Eric or Nick, would you like to comment on Mr. Valentine's question about monitoring for the ecological restoration aspects post-restoration?
Sure, I'd be happy to. At least get things off, and then Nick can, can op and tell me I'm completely wrong. So wetlands are, at least freshwater wetlands are generally characterized by the presence of wetland hydrology, wetland soils, and wetland plants. Right now, because of cranberry farming, those, some of those features have been suppressed. So our job is to basically restore the keystone ecological process that drives formation and maintenance of wetland habitat, which is movement of storage of water. You can't have a wetland without it being wet. And when you, when you have the right hydrology, the other pieces fall into place. You get your wetland soils, you get your wetland plants, all the habitat features that are associated with that, and all the processes that occur in those systems, the nitrification or whatever, whatever it may be, all fall into place. So right now, as has been alluded to previously, we have a bunch of groundwater data so we can see where the water table lies in relation to the surface. We can certainly, post-restoration, will, can look at the groundwater data post-restoration and see how those water levels have shifted through the manipulation of the surface as we propose vegetation data. We will collect additional vegetation data throughout the site and then follow up post-restoration with some additional data to see the relative proportion of, of wetland plants to non-wetland plant species. Those are two very obvious ways to demonstrate success. Soils are a little more difficult because the timescale on which wetland soils can form is much longer, in some cases longer than any of our lifetimes. So we generally hang our hat on the presence of wetland hydrology and, and wetland plants. Nick, do you have anything else you want to throw in there?
That was, that was good, Eric. Thanks for that. A couple of points on terms of the, you know, construction, post-construction work based on other projects. We typically enforce a three-year warranty for the contractor to guarantee the plants that are put on site and to guarantee a site that does not have invasive plants for those three years. So in terms of the vegetation monitoring, there will be a component of that that will be required by the contractor to make sure, at least the, the plants that were placed out there during construction, meet a certain success threshold. Beyond that, we are typically required by some of the permitting agencies, and it's happening more and more now, DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers, and some conservation commissions as well, to do post-restoration monitoring. That could be, in some cases, up to five years, but could be three years of photo recaptures. It could be the plant monitoring. It could be geomorphic monitoring of, of looking at cross-sections or the, the profile of the stream channel. So those are elements that are typically worked into the permitting process that speak to some of that post-construction monitoring. So I expect some of that will happen again, and the Conservation Commission of Harwich is certainly welcome to add some of that as they see fit. And my last point for all of this is to say that when construction is completed, that's essentially the beginning of the restoration process. It's not the end of it. It's the very beginning. And, but, you know, three to five years of monitoring, I think we have to remember, is at the very, very beginning stages of recovery of these ecosystems. So I, I'm very hesitant to draw conclusions after a year, after two years, or after three years of monitoring, whatever that monitoring may be. So I just wanna have realistic expectations about this, that monitoring is critical. It's not something that has been done to this scale on any other cranberry bog restoration project, pre and post. So this is new. I think I want to make that, you know, make sure everybody's aware of that also. The restoration of retired cranberry bogs is a new practice, first started in 2009 in Plymouth. But the, the nitrogen focus is, is much newer than that. And there has not been a project that has had pre and post-restoration nitrogen monitoring as part of it. So while there are other types of wetland projects that have had that type of nitrogen monitoring and pond creation that has had that as well, this element of it is, is relatively new. So there, there certainly are some unknowns going into that, and I recognize that that's a little bit unnerving. I just wanted to throw that out there. Hey?
Unnerving, huh? Thank you very much. I'm gonna get off that subject, but Dan, you and I talked about the monitoring. Do we have money budgeted for the monitoring? you and I talked about the monitoring. Do we have money budgeted for the monitoring?
So my understanding is that the monitoring, essentially we paid within the existing appropriation, which ultimately would lower, you know, the town, how much we can put towards construction. That said, at risk of getting too into, into the weeds, Brian, Ed, would it make sense to Nick's point to wait sometime after completion to initiate post restoration until it establishes itself more often?
It's a question of.
You gotta go, you gotta go up to the mic. Sorry.
Retain your knees are new.
I think that, that you don't want to stop, but you don't maybe have to go full bore, you know what I mean? But we did do a very sophisticated freshwater conversion to saltwater marsh that tells you something about me, just recently. And it did take a number of years to become fully established, but we saw things in the first year. I mean, you start really seeing things in the first year. And this is not, the nitrogen attenuation piece is not like growing, you know, reeds or something. It's, what we need is, we need the emergent mar, deep, deep emergent marsh to have plants in it. And we need the ponds that be holes. And once that happens, then you will build the microbial community that will get denitrification going. And that doesn't take very long. It may take long for it to become fully, you know, whatever it's going to be in 20 years, but in 20 years is what it's going to be in 20 years. You should start seeing things right away. Another example is, we just did a cranberry detention pond project for the town of Falmouth, and we saw immediately nitrogen levels drop in the very first three months. So I'm not going to guarantee that because I'm not the designer or the constructing guy, but there's nothing in the world that says it shouldn't go. Maybe we do it limited in the first year while it's stabilized, then we can ramp it up a little bit. I'd rather see longer than intensive for five years. I'd rather see one, two, four, maybe, something like that.
Yeah. No, I agree. That's what you and, you and I, Dan, talked about.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Also, Larry?
Yeah, I'm set. Thank you.
Julie?
No, my questions were answered by that discussion. Thank you.
Mary?
I don't pretend to be smart enough to get into this. Thank you.
Joe, anything, Dad?
I'd like to build up a selectman Anderson's statement, say that there's not much I can add. However, I have mundane questions that may impact upon some of the discussions. But first, I'd be looking at the, the draft MOA on page four, which is the continuation of item number nine. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to Mike, also have a question. There were two draft license agreements that were provided, and I know they're F and G. I don't know which one was F and which one was G, because I know that section nine, or that, excuse me, term number nine makes reference to both draft license agreements. Regardless, my question, if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, is term number nine talks about that the town would provide, agrees to provide HCT and its partners and consultants access to the adjacent town-owned properties, including 203 Bank Street, for use by the contractor for construction operations as approved by the town in accordance with the license agreement between the parties attached here, too, as exhibit G. And so I saw in the draft MOA that the draft MOA has a life cycle that is expected to end on December 31st, 2027. And knowing that these documents were first contemplated almost, or over two years ago, the town is expecting to receive no later than June 16th proposals on the disposition of those very properties. And so it's got nothing to do with all the great science that was just mentioned, but it does have everything to do with an active procurement that the town's doing to, for the disposition. What happens, what do you think happens based on the language contained here?
As, may I, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
As, as was discussed at your meeting on April 19th, the disposition of 203 Bank Street, based on your decision-making process relative to your RFP, specifically June 16th, will then determine the language in paragraph nine. So it does make sense as to what Mr. Powers is, I think, suggesting that action be taken on this MOA, at least relative to nine and the whole document, after June 16th. Go ahead, Joe.
Sorry, that was a thumbs up. I appreciate that. That's all I needed. Okay. Thank you.
Any, Tom, you were up.
Thank you very mu, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little bit like Mary Anderson. I'm a layman standing at the podium. I am not a scientist. But I have been attending a lot of these meetings over the course of the last two or three years. And I guess I just want to say that as early as paragraph two, we make reference to an agreement in which the parties have determined, which the parties have determined meet the town's nitrogen removal goals and is consistent with HCT's ecologic, ecological restoration goals for the project. I mean, that's, that's been our goal from the very beginning, as owner of the property, as we look at restoration, to do it in a way that responsibly meets the town's needs for denitrification. We see this very much as a partnership. And yes, we're owners of the, of the property. I suppose theoretically, we could have let it just sit there and become a poison ivy patch in the center of Harwich. But we've looked at restoration. We're trying to do it in a way that, that clearly meets the town's goals. And from, I think from our point of view, that's articulated very early on in the, in the, in the agreement. I'm the son of a neurosurgeon, and I remember the day my father said to me, "Son, you know, neurosurgery, neurosurgery is an imprecise science." And I was thinking to myself, you know, you're a neurosurgeon and you're saying that this is imprecise? And he said, "So much of it depends on circumstances that are beyond our control." And this is new science for us, too. I mean, this, this, as Nick acknowledged, this is an exploration with some unknowns. But we've got good science backing us up. You know, what will 15 or 20, 20 years look like exactly? It's impossible for us to know. But we're certainly moving, we believe, in the, in the right direction with a very strong partnership with our good scientists in common and with an organization that wants to work with the town to get it right.
Thank you. Larry?
No, I appreciate those comments. It's good to have, because we have common goals. I'm just trying to be sure we're watching both of them.
So Larry, is there anything else that would make you more comfortable that you'd like to see added? Because if I heard Joe correctly and Michael, most, the earliest we're going to vote this is June 20.
I'm fine.
It's a lovely time, but in, in, in an effort to save people from having to come back.
But they love the trip up here, right? No, Michael, I'm fine. I'm not going, I'm not going to push it anymore.
So the language you're good with?
We need to go.
Okay, so we're stuck on the date.
Well, in saying that, go back and, well, I, I'm not going to press on it, but if, but if you can find language that better sets the baseline for the ecological, so there, and I realize nothing's happening early on, so there, so we have some firm targets that we're trying to move toward. May not get there, certainly not my lifetime, but you know. And then, and then match that with the monitoring, because you and I talked, and I think you made a good point, too. We don't need extent, well, we've had that discussion. But I, I'm going to live with whatever comes with now. I'm not going to press it anymore.
So if, if you heard him correctly, if there's anything you can add to make him feel more comfortable, if you could do that, but then get it to us long before the 20th, so we can review it, so we can just have a vote either on the 20th or the 27th, depending on how the RFP process goes on the 16th?
This should make you more comfortable. Right now, there are no ponds in, in Colebrook.
Right. That I got.
There is no deep emergent marsh in Colebrook. We know that they attenuate nitrogen. We might not know how much, but we know they do. There is no salt marsh in Colebrook. We know they're great at attenuating nitrogen. So maybe we're not perfect and we can't predict how much they'll take out, but right now, none of that is happening. So that's how I get to sleep at night. I do worry about this project.
So I'm going to agenda this for the 27th of June. Any changes? Get to us at least a week before the red line. Joe, we've got that. That should give us enough time to dance through the procurement process and figure out where we're at. Excellent. Does that work? Thank you.
Received.
Timely enough for you? Yes, thank you. Be nice to vote it tonight, but it doesn't sound like it's possible. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm not the reason you're not voting tonight, by the way.
Don't blame Joe.
Thank you, Brian.
Common theme. Discussion, possible vote, potential appointment for members of the local planning committee, LCP. There's two listed. We need to pick one.
Michael, I would move Ed McMahon for the LCP.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? That was my pick on the first round, so I wholeheartedly agree. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Town administrator for a next steps for the LCP Local Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that action. That, as you know, rounds out the establishment of the local planning committee members. Of course, there'll be several staff members associated with that committee, but now having it fully populated on the assumption that Mick, Mick Manis will accept your cordial invitation, which we certainly hope he does and expect that he will. Next steps would be, I think, to call the committee together preliminarily, just to get them all in the same room, talk about what brought them to that point, and also advise them and the board on the next steps, which would be the RFP process for the consultant that's going to work with the committee to, to develop the bulk of the plan parameters, if you will. As you know, of course, we no longer have our planner. We're actively seeking that role to be filled, but that's a critical role to this planning. So really, the question would be, is what is the sense of the board on how aggressively you want to start next steps with our planner presently being a vacant position?
Thank you, Joe. Comments? Larry?
I don't see how we can start until we have a, a planner, someone that's going to organize and manage the process. I would, I would like to be very aggressive, but I just don't see how, how, how we can do that. You can possibly get them together to get to know each other and have some preliminary meetings, but I'm afraid it's going to slow down.
Julie?
I agree. That, that's been my concern as well. So I think, we all know, we need to get somebody, but.
Mary?
Yeah, I agree. I don't know how you can, what you would even say to them.
So what we can do then is we'll have, make sure that the RFP process is locked and loaded and ready to go. Mr. Edman did provide significant information on that. So it is something I can review with staff and have that ready to go in concert with a planner helping evaluate the responses.
So the only thought I have is I don't think we should wait any time at all. I think that as soon as you can get this committee together to talk about what the committee's going to do, and I know John left some fairly extensive notes, as soon as we can get the procurement out for the consultant, whether, whether we have to rely on a temporary planner. But Joe, this document is, is long overdue. And the longer we wait and continue to wait, the longer it's going to take to get a head start. So I, I think we need to get the committee together, get their thoughts, and give them some sort of vision planning tool for themselves and work to get the consultant as soon as possible.
Who, who would you propose direct that?
Joe Powers.
Hi, Joe.
And I only say that because he is our interim town planner.
Okay.
But I just don't, you know, these people have filled out applications, gone through a lengthy interview process. Enough time has passed where we at least have to keep the, the flame burning on this and not, not continue to wait. So at least an initial meeting, Joe.
We may not be that far apart. We can get something going. And my guess is we're going to have to slow walk it until we get someone here, but at least keep the interest of the committee. I'm not, I'm in favor of that. I just don't.
That's my only point.
We get, yeah, as I say, I don't think we're that far apart. Get something started.
I can develop a plan and let you know what the next steps are and get more guidance.
Thank you. Town administrators' report?
So knowing that Memorial Day is fast approaching and is recognized as the unofficial beginning of summer, you recall at your last meeting, there was discussion about beach hours, changing those hours. As you recall from that meeting, I did meet with representatives from Recreation and Youth Commission, Recreation and Youth Director, Public Safety, and Public Works. The consensus of that, that group was to keep the process going, if that's the wish of the board. The proponents of the changes were contemplating, rather than going from midnight to 10, so beaches closing at the same time as the parking lots. There was discussion on perhaps settling on an 11:00 PM close for both beaches and parking lots. Now administratively, what that means for you folks is the Rec and Youth Commission held a public hearing, because it's actually, as you know, a change to their beach regulations, and they adhered to the board's policy of a public hearing. Chair of Rec and Youth Commission confirmed that the commission only contemplated reducing from midnight to 10. They have no position on the 11:00 PM plan or counterproposal, if you will. So the question then to, to you folks is, do you want to have a hearing in June, a public hearing, and you could do it jointly with Rec and Youth Commission to contemplate moving the hours for both to 11:00 PM, to amend the regulations for that, or take any other action? I say, I say that because I, I think the earliest we could have the public hearing, if that's the will of the board, is June 21st, which again is a Tuesday because of the Monday holiday.
And, and I'm fine with a joint meeting. Joe, on the other changes, i.e. signage, possible speed bump, any, any progress made in that? Because the bulk of the complaints I've heard were related to signage and speed bump, along with some others, but.
So we did discuss all of those items. DPW director was informed of some of those items, as well as, I believe, a flashing stop sign. And so I've asked him to research all of those processes. So I know that, as you probably know better than I, the speed bump or the traffic calming device, I think is what it's called nowadays, would involve the Traffic Advisory Safety Committee, so we can get that group going. So staff is still working on the administrative end of it, if you will, signage, other changes. But the question then came to what would the signage get to? And that would be the public hearing.
Board okay with a June 21st public hearing?
Yeah.
And you prefer to have that jointly?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
We're not debating, but I'll let you make a comment.
No, I know, just, beach stickers start to get checked the end of June, I think, right before that, just to throw it out there, if we're changing anything for this year.
Beach stickers, Joe? That's probably an important piece of this, if it says in the regulations what the times are.
Again, we can go forward on the hearing. We couldn't do it before the 21st, though. Unless, unless the board feels that the hearing process was already done, I'm just trying to be mindful of your policy on regulations.
I think they start checking them around June 20th.
What's the board's, I mean, we're getting, in the town administrators' report, we're getting a little in-depth on this, so.
Sorry, guys.
Why don't, why don't I bring this back?
Yeah, because I think our discussion, yeah.
Or if the, or if the board would at least entertain me having a conversation with the town administrator, the rec director, and the head of the recreation on whether or not they think we need to have another plan.
Well, my concern is, is that seemed to be the biggest thing was the discrepancy between the beach closing and the parking lot closing. We could bring those together. Not sure why it was a difficult discussion, but.
We'll, we'll bring this back.
But bring it back.
We'll discuss it tomorrow. Is that it for town administrators' report?
That is everything.
Selectmen's report, Mary?
I don't have anything.
Larry?
Treasure chest is being well received. There, we were, I guess, need a couple volunteers. Someone put a Facebook page up. We got four volunteers that wanted to help out, so.
Scar.
And people are, it's looking good. They will make a formal report back to us and when it fits on yours, on your agenda. But I want me to come back and give a more formal report of how it's going.
of how it's going.
Julie?
I kicked off my summer this Saturday because I went to the dockside and had a drink and I did not have dinner, but I had a drink and it was excellent and I cannot wait. Oh, but we did try some amazing shrimp. I'm going to butcher it. I'm not even going to attempt it. It was amazing, so...
Don't even say it's going to make us hungry.
And the full menu is coming out.
And jealous.
Yeah. I'll embarrass myself, but they were amazing.
I just have two things. One is, it was missed tonight, but hats off to all the employees of our DPW and the dump. They run an amazing operation over there, and that comment should have been made. Though we were questioning Link about rates and whether or not we should compete, hands down to those guys that run that dump, the amount of debris and material and waste that goes into that dump and how they manage it is pretty incredible. And then on the Assembly of Delegates, it's important to note that Elizabeth Harder does work for us. This one is a, seems to be contentious, and there was a little bit of back and forth, but overall, our representative, which tonight was a surprise that she's only 5.87%, does work hard for the town of Harwich.
I just have a point of information. As you know, Emily Mitchell's being sworn in tomorrow as our new town clerk here in Harwich, and her current position as director of the COA is going to be vacant. And I really strongly recommend to the board to find a candidate, and I totally recommend, if possible, to get someone that has a gerontologist background, similar to what they do in the town of Dennis. It really is important to have somebody that understands the process of aging naturally and the multitude of stages that one goes through.
Thank you.
And I'll be happy to volunteer to be on that search committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming tonight. Motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.